Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 3rd, 2021. Work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and we're going to get right into it as soon as we have a proclamation from Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitro. Mr. Kitro?
Yeah, I'm really excited to be able to read this proclamation this evening for a couple reasons. For those who don't know, I am the proud parent of a child with special needs. He's autistic. So you know, this is near and dear to me, and I'm married to a child psychologist. So this is definitely an interest to our family, both personally and professionally. So without that, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Awareness Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter, while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services reports that one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition, and research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents, provide them better opportunities to lead full, productive lives. And whereas children and youth with mental health challenges, and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate, as well as the integration of behavioral health and primary care education, child welfare. And where Children's Mental Health Matters is a Maryland Public Education Campaign, co-sponsored by the Mental Health Association of Maryland, the Maryland Coalition of Families, which brings together nonprofits, schools, agencies, and other partners with the goal to raise public awareness of the importance of children's mental health, help reduce the stigma of mental health, let parents know that they not only in caring for children with mental health needs, and most importantly, connect families throughout Maryland with the information and services to help their children. And whereas it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about worrying signs of mental health disorders, and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child. And whereas Children's Mental Health Awareness Week is celebrated annually during the first full week of May to raise awareness and understanding of children's mental health and illness. Now therefore, I, Andy Kitro, Deputy City Administrator, City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through 8th, 2021, as Children's Mental Health Matters Awareness Week. Now with that, we do have a few folks from Wycomico County Public Schools here who oversee the the schools' efforts with delivering the Mental Health Matters mission in the campaign. So I know I've worked with Meredith Miller in the past on this, and if you've given the pleasure, I'd like to introduce her and let her spend a couple minutes just talking about how this is important to the to the community.
Thank you, Andy. Good evening, everyone. I just would like to first say thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to just kind of share a little bit about the campaign. Andy kind of summarized it in the proclamation, but as you all know, this past year, year and few months has kind of taken a toll on everybody, but especially our students. And the focus this year is, you know, the importance of being healthy, not just in our bodies, but in our minds. And so that is one thing that we're trying to, you know, stress to the students as far as, you know, positive coping skills, taking care of themselves, as well as, you know, teachers and staff taking care of themselves, so they are mentally healthy to be able to address the needs of the students. Unfortunately, with COVID, we weren't able to host a big community event this year. However, all of our schools have numerous activities going on throughout the whole week. You can follow it on our Facebook page, which is Wakamiko Public Schools Mental Health Awareness. I don't want to take up all the time. I have Blair Catlin Brown on here, who is from Salisbury Middle School, who's the school social worker there, as well as Angela Blake. She is one of the social workers at Choices. So if they would, I'd like to give them the opportunity to say anything while they're here.
I'll go ahead. Thanks, Meredith. So it's my second year at Salisbury Middle School, and I will say that we do a great job at Salisbury Middle School, especially considering this is this, I'm the first social worker they've ever had of really embracing the needs of the mental health of our students and staff. So that was awesome. I came from Somerset, so that was awesome to see in Wycomico. So this week, we're kind of, we're making sure that we're catching the kids that are at home and in the building. So we're doing a flip grid activity where the kids and staff, because we felt like staff really has a lot to contribute in knowledge and information, are doing a flip grid about where they talk about what have you been doing to keep your mental health strong? And the winner, there'll be a raffle, and they'll get a mental health toolkit. We're doing little treats for the teachers in the teacher's lounge, because it is also Teacher Appreciation Week, and teacher mental health is student mental health. So we want to make sure that our teachers stay strong. We're partnering, partnering with food services to put the these little bookmarks that Children's Mental Health Matters gave us on information about the brain and anxiety and mood in all of the food bags on Thursday, along with our casual day and green that we're wearing on Thursday. And lastly, we've been working all school year, but really focusing this week on improving our courtyard, and we're trying to find funds to do an outdoor classroom, because study after study shows that outdoor time equals better mental health outcomes. So we're really embracing that this week, and we were able to get some great grants from Salisbury University and from the Community Foundation that have really helped us beef up all of that work. So that's what we're doing at Salisbury Middle.
Well, just quickly, just as a social worker at Choices Academy, working with students, I would say I don't know if I would use the word the most vulnerable, but the pretty vulnerable population, it's a subset of the public school setting. Children are referred there for a variety of reasons. And it is very vital to be an ongoing assessment and also breaking breaking the stigma of mental health. And I think the more we talk about it, the more the families are comfortable with it and sharing some of the family dynamics. So this is a great event. It's a great week to have throughout the schools, and we just hope that our community partners can also spread the message. And thanks, Meredith, for all your endless, endless energy and effort for us at all such social workers at the board and keeping us all coordinated and organized.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, ladies, for for your input. As many of you may know that this subject is very near and dear to my heart after being the CEO of Lower Shore Enterprises for several years. And certainly, well, our relationship when I was there with the schools was was really positive. So we thank you for what you do. It's it's a, it's not the easiest job in the world. I'm well aware, and it takes a lot of patience. And thank you again for for what you do. Okay, I think this time we'll get into the agenda itself. Director of Infrastructure and Development, Amanda, Amanda Pollack, will take us through the latest update from Chesapeake Utilities. Good afternoon, Amanda.
Good afternoon. In your package is the monthly update from Chesapeake Utilities. They are continuing with the installation of the gas main throughout Salisbury, and right now they're at approximately sixty-four percent complete with the pipeline installation to date. They're looking at having the pipeline installed by potentially the end of June and starting the tie-ins on the north side late June or into the third quarter of 2021. And they are completing restoration as they go along. There hasn't been a ton of update in the last month on the rail trail, but we do continue to work with them on that. And then additionally, Chesapeake Utilities has submitted to us a planting plan for the Lake Street Playground, which we are reviewing and reviewing with Field Operations. So I'd be happy to pass along any questions that you have to them.
Thank you, Amanda. I'll open the floor to questions. Mr. Boda?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
One question. Amanda, are they also going to be responsible for doing a tree planting between, I think, Evo and thirteen?
So they they are not planning to put trees back there because they don't want trees over their pipeline, which we agree with. I mean, we would typically not want trees over our water or sewer mains either. So they're they're not putting trees back in that same place where trees were removed.
Hmm. Okay.
This is Gregory?
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a proposed budget amendment to replace the HVAC Condensing Unit Fire Department. Chief Toll is going to make the presentation. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And what you do have in front of you is a request for approval of a budget amendment in the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. And that's to cover the unexpected costs for repairs to our HVAC system located at our headquarters facility. The system has experienced a failure of the condensing unit and the internal coil that has resulted in a loss of air conditioning throughout the entire building. You can see in the proposal, the work that's going to be completed, and it would be done on citywide contract. The company that has been awarded the bid through Department of Procurement. This unanticipated expense for repair was unforeseeable to foresee. Without this transfer, it would have to be pushed off into July. And just to let you know, as of leaving the building today, the temperature inside the building was eighty-three degrees, and it was seventy degrees on the outside. So it was much warmer on the inside of the building. There's no way for us to open up windows in that building because they're all sealed windows, so.
Okay, questions? The council? Mr. Boda?
No questions. I'm okay with moving forward with this.
Thank you.
I don't think the chief needs to be wearing shorts all summer.
Ms. Jackson?
I'm okay with it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions.
All right, we will move this forward. Ms. Nichols, I understand that we, at the end of the meeting today, we will have the first reading of this this item, correct? Okay. Thank you. All right, Chief, that's fine. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we can get this in before it really gets warm.
Well, the 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 issue that we're having is it's a five-week delivery of the equipment. So we're going to be pushing into June, mid-June before the the unit is actually in for us to have it installed.
Okay, we'll see what we can do with that.
Maybe you will be wearing shorts.
It might be. Next up, we have an ordinance to amend the fire prevention code. Chief, you have that one as well.
Yes, sir. So this is just a annual amendment where we constantly review and update the fire prevention code based on changes in NFPA codes and changes that we've made to our department. So what you have is a request to amend the fire prevention code and add additional permit requirements, which will include to perform any fire hydrant or fire pump water flow tests and the sale of consumer fireworks. So we're looking for those to be added as a permit requirement.
Chief, I have one question before I turn over to the council. In the past, didn't we allow private concerns to do that at the expense of the manufacturer?
Who? Say it again.
Didn't we at one point allow for private testing to be done, and then the information sent to us, whether it's whether it's working or not, so they paid for the expense?
Yeah, there was some third-party testing that was allowed before.
Is that going to be still allowed?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, could you just get back and verify that for me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Mr. Boda, questions?
Is there, what's the cost for the the fee for the fireworks permit?
Um, let me, I'll pull that up real quick and let you know.
Because there will be a fee for the permit, correct?
That is correct. The for sale of consumer fireworks, so a standalone tent on commercial space is two hundred and fifty dollars. Then other commercial space issue for the sale of goods within a building is a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. All right. Because I know like up at Walmart North, there's usually a company that comes in with the tent in the parking lot. So they would need, are we, is that going to be included in our budget this year for the the fees that, okay.
Ms. Jackson, questions? You're on mute, April.
The lettering under number four and eight-one-one, eight-point eleven-point zero-two-zero. Um, could you explain that to me?
Where are you at again? I'm sorry.
Okay, it's under chapter eight-point-one-one.
Yes.
And it's under B, number four. And it's I.
Yeah, so this is a local amendment that was adopted that would allow the fire marshal to put different signage on buildings based on specific hazards that we may be encountering while in the building. So if there was a building that was in some type of disrepair that needed certain work done on it, that the fire marshal could have placards made and would go on the exterior of the wall that would allow units responding. When they saw that, they could see the marking, which would identify some type of hazard that was in the building to allow our personnel to know what they're getting ready to encounter.
Excellent. I'm just, I didn't understand. So if you don't understand, it's a ask, or I ask, so that you really explain it in detail. Thank you.
Are you okay with April moving forward?
Certainly, yes. Yes, I am.
Okay. Ms. Blake?
No questions and move it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions moving forward.
Thank you. All right, this, Ms. Nichols, we'll get this on the next agenda, please. We'll move that forward.
Council President, I have a comment to add to the ordinance that was just approved for consensus. Just so the city clerk is aware, amendments to subsection B six of chapter eight, eleven-point zero-two, excuse me, two oh, had been made before this particular ordinance. Those amendments, however, are not documented on the city's MuniCode database. Specifically, subsections K, L, and M were not added to the MuniCode database. I would suggest that those be included as part of the upload for this ordinance, when and if it's eventually adopted. I confirmed with the chief that amendments to subsection B six had already been made and approved by the council to add subsection K, L, and M previously. They just need to be documented on MuniCode.
Mr. Sullivan, were they within the past year?
I see the chief not even said yes.
Okay, that's why they're not there yet. They haven't been codified.
Well, they're codified. They just haven't been uploaded to the MuniCode database. They're codified upon adoption.
Okay.
Would you just follow up offline on that after we finish to make sure you're on the same page? Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have a budget amendment to purchase EnterGov software. And Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitro will handle that. Mr. Kitro?
Hi, everyone. Um, so this is being brought back. This was presented at a previous work session. I passed along some additional information regarding some of the breakdowns for budgeting. So I wanted to open it up for further discussion from council regarding the information that was shared or additional questions that that exists right now.
Okay, I will open the floor to questions. But at this time, we will not, we'll have the separate vote on whether to move it forward. So at this point in time, we'll just entertain questions regarding the information that Mr. Kitro provided. So, Mr. Boda?
I appreciate the information that that Mr. Kitro provided. And I think this is overall going to make a make a lot of, a lot of things much more smoother and especially on the user side or the those who are registering properties or the, you know, on that end, and then also on our, I think it's on our side, it's going to be much more efficient.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I think I was clear. No other questions, comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Well, I guess that leaves it to me because I got a bunch of them. And if I could, let me go down through the thing. Is Amanda still on the call? Okay. First up, there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars coming from Infrastructure and Development. And it it was a construction inspector vacancy because not hired due to COVID. And it says the job will be posted and hired before the end of the fiscal year. Planner one vacancy, not a higher, not hired due to COVID. Administration requests to not hire essential positions that the department could manage with vacancy. And that position is not in the budget, correct?
No, the position is in the budget. It stayed in the budget, yes.
This year's budget, okay.
Yes.
And administrative assistant? Is that in the budget?
It is, yes. So those two positions, we decided not to fill until the next fiscal year, so July one. So we took their salary savings to apply towards EnterGov. The inspector, as we had noted, we did want to fill that position this year, and we have. We have the new inspector starting here in May. So in the transfer for EnterGov, we had accounted for that position to start May first. They're actually going to start it a little bit later in May, so we we have ample budget left in the salary account for that position.
Okay, and you have, and you have no problem with any of these? Any of the seven twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, correct. So it, the bulk of it is salary, and then the associated health insurance with those three positions. There was also some overtime that we're looking like we aren't going to need, and then a couple other miscellaneous accounts. So I I was comfortable with those, that transfer, yes.
Okay. Have you seen the the new software? The demonstration of the new software?
Yeah, so our our staff, my team has gotten a demonstration. It's been a little bit of time since I've seen it, but we have seen it as well, and we'll be using it.
What do you think of it?
It's it's good. So it makes it more interactive. We're right now, for our inspection staff, we're uploading PDFs. So it's kind of very static. So instead of having a dynamic form that we're using, that the software has, instead, we print an inspection report, we scan it, and we upload it as a PDF. So this makes it more inclusive also with the properties, so that if we have something associated with a specific property, we could see what HCDD has put in associated with that property. They in turn can see what we're looking at. So right now, we don't have that. So if we're looking at a permit, or if they're looking at a violation, they are in completely different systems right now. So we we don't necessarily know what the other department would be doing as far as permits or violations on any given property without having further dialogue. So it will be nice to have all that in one place.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions on the housing community development. I do have questions on the Water and Sewer Fund. My biggest issue with this, to be frank, is we're going to take nineteen thousand dollars from the Water and Sewer Fund, and we're going to ask people to pay six percent more for the Water and Sewer Fund this coming year. I have, I have an issue with that. And is there any, does anybody else have a concern about that?
So I'll just make a comment, then hear the concern. Typically, when we, because of the way the Water and Sewer Fund is set up with what Amanda's team does, it pulls from several accounts. Part of infrastructure development deals with the utilities and the permitting of that piece. So typically, with a lot of projects, a piece will come from water and sewer collective, whether it's salaries or just additional accounting when we're doing capital projects. So because this being a big expense, we thought about ten percent of this project would be shared from the Water and Sewer Fund, but that's kind of how we determine that. And if Amanda wants to speak anymore to that, but I was just kind of explaining how that came to to be.
I'll just add, so the positions that we talked about that are vacant are all shared. Their salaries are one-third from the general fund, one-third from water, and one-third from sewer. So that's, that's just kind of how the the DID staff salaries are set up. So when we have a vacancy like that, it does span across both general fund and water and sewer funds.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Explanation, but I still have a problem with it. Ms. Blake, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I want to just ask, this was the same, is this is the same software that was on like the wish list for the budget coming up? Is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's, yes. Yeah, well, we would not have to, of course, fund it if if we funded now, it wouldn't be requested. It's been there a couple of years now.
And the other, the other, I have a couple more questions. The other question is, how many of the other programs of other type systems? And I understand the logic, the basic logic about going to the same upgrade to Munis. I have a concern because Munis had its flaws, and they're waiting for the next quote generation, which comes at a higher price, obviously. And I did ask the question, and I'm not sure whether I got the direct answer. But how long has this system, the new one, been in use?
So, um, each one of these software things have iterations, so there's upgrades to each one. We've been exploring EnterGov for the last three years since I've been here. So I know it's been around since at least two thousand seventeen. I would have to double check to see if, how far it's been available prior to that start date. I think it's, I think it's five years old, so it's it's a relatively newer software, it's comprehensive software, but I'd have to double check on than the original.
I'll just add, there there are two different mechanisms and two different divisions of the parent company, and Munis is the, what we have been used to for many years is more clunky. That is, that is the honest truth, but we are IS is going through the testing mechanism for the new, the newest version right now. So that's going to come live to our team, you know, I think in May, if not June. And so that will be then a web-based version that will be much more user-friendly. But the the EnterGov version is much more user-friendly. But they they pair together well, and Bill has has done done multiple rounds of, you know, chatting with their their tech people, making sure that it was going to integrate with ours. Our teams have done at least two run-throughs with their staff to make sure that they're comfortable with it. Because again, we don't want to buy, we realize this is a lot of money. We don't want to buy software that isn't going to work for us. We don't want to buy software that staff's not going to use. So we we knew that their buy-in was going to be key here. And we do feel that we are going to get the bang for the buck and the the ability for our teams to be able to communicate with one another and solve a problem that, you know, they never just live in DID. It's it's DID, it's HCDD, it's finance. They all need to talk. And this software is going to enable us to do that.
And this software is gonna enable us to do that.
Is this software also the one that requires like the six tablets? And the?
No, that's, that's different.
That's a whole different thing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And the last question I have is, with the cost of this kind of project, how come we didn't put it out for an RFP?
Thank you.
So this is, I wish Jennifer was here. So when we, because of it being a Tyler Tech product, they're the only ones to have it. So an RFP, we wouldn't be going out for a formal solicitation for a proprietary software platform from a different company, because that different company would not be able to integrate with our current system through Munis and our other software platforms. So it's a sole source. So there is no other company that offers this exact product. If we would have wanted to do an RFP, we would have looked at potentially other platforms that can do buildings and permit inspections or housing and develop, which we have Comgate right now that does some of the code enforcement infractions. But this is the only one that's available right now that speaks to, that's integrated with Munis, our financial side of things. So that's, that's why we chose or wanted to go with, with this side of it.
I think that's a flawed way of looking at it personally. We're looking at a legacy system that has tremendous amount of issues. Supposing I said to you that there was a company that's out there that has a product that's been in the market for four years and has a proven track record and could put the whole thing in at the same time and was cheaper? Should we consider that?
The consideration would be if, and you know, Bill's not here right this second, but is it compatible with, if our goal is for all of our systems to talk to each other and it's compatible, then that is something to consider. If it's not compatible, then we would in a sense be creating another silo of software. And is that our goal? So again, it wouldn't, it may or may not speak with the Comgate system that currently exists. It may not speak with Munis. So I guess that, that again becomes the, it is a good question that can be raised is what is the goal with any of these software packages is how much they communicate with each other and how much do we have to worry about that on the back end? So there's definitely pluses and minuses on, on both of those.
And Jack, I mean, our team is going through the test, making sure all the kinks are worked out of this next updated version. So I don't think it is fair to say that it is, you know, you know, a dated program. What we were using was dated, but what we're going to is not. It is the 2019 version. And, you know, I trust Bill's recommendation that it is, it is a, it works well. It's gonna work well for our team. And the folks that have been testing it to make sure there aren't any, the workflows are all working well, have enjoyed it. So you know, we're not looking to, you know.
The only thing that, and I'm speaking from experience. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up. Because I had a legacy program in a business, in a $160 million business. We took the upgrade. The upgrade turned out to be a disaster. And it went through, it went through testing protocols and everything else. And the worst case would be that if you, if you ran the RFP to begin with and it would be clear either by expense or by lack of interface or whatever, or a program, a new program that had everything in it, you would have known that at RFP time and then you just proceed the way you're proceeding now. I just would feel much more comfortable if we had looked at other options at this kind of money. So that's my, that's my only point.
Can I say something, Jack? Do we know of any other city that uses this?
Yeah, that was, I, Ron Strickler is, has popped online. He's done a little bit more research on the actual product because he would be a recipient just as much as Amanda. He's got a couple comments that may help the conversation. So if I can give him, you know, 60 seconds to add to this.
Yeah, but my question hasn't been answered.
April, I believe in Andy's materials that he shared with council, there were seven or eight other cities just in Maryland that use this. And again, we're, you know, larger cities use this, not, not smaller cities. So some of the other bigger players do use this.
And how successful has it been? I mean, I'm not just being a thorn in your side. I just need to know, you know, I mean, I'm kind of like, Jack, has it been successful within either one of these cities? How successful is it? Is it problematic or what?
If I could speak, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Heath, the, the two specific cities that I had done some research in were in, I believe it was Boulder, Colorado and Kansas City. So in both of those instances, in reviewing their documents and material, they are extremely happy with the use of the product. And initially, the project was rolled out in 2012. So it has been around for nine years. Right off the bat, with any new software, there were some glitches and some issues. I know there was, I believe it was in Nevada, there was a city that was one of the very first cities that it was introduced in. The big issues that we face, I think, interdepartmental wise, Amanda and John Chief Tall could vouch to this. And even with the police department now, with this software, our ability to integrate what we do on a daily basis is, it's, I mean, it's gonna expand. You know, it's gonna multiply. So with our current operating system with Comgate, so HCDD is the only system that uses Comgate right now. So Comgate does not communicate with Munis. When we have to move information from Munis to, to Comgate and vice versa, it's a process that involves manpower and time and information. And if we, say we went to a property at Main Street, call it 105. If we went to 105 Main Street with this new system and we're doing an inspection, we will be able to verify that DID has done their inspection, that the fire department has done their inspection. We can see how many calls for service they've had from the fire department. The ability to integrate this system with Munis is probably the most important part of it because it streamlines the process. And then the other piece that I think is very important to remember is the ability for the user to access this system, specifically for Amanda and permitting and HCDD as well. They are able to actually submit permitting requests online to eliminate the need for mailing or in-office visits with their plans and documents that can, that can be streamlined and approved directly by permitting after reviewing that information. The same thing goes ultimately with my goal with this system would be is to set up some type of access for our property owners in the city to register their properties online through the system that would eliminate a lot of the manpower that takes place with the city employees right now. So I think probably the most important piece is the ability to tie into Munis. And then the ability for us to work interdepartmentally with other permitting and fire and police, where everything will be viewable on one screen. I know the upfront cost is high, but I do believe that ultimately it's gonna pay off in the long run for both our constituents and the city employees. And I'd be happy to share some of that information from those other city websites and just some feedback that I found in my research.
Hey, Ron, a follow-up question. Does Boulder, or did Boulder and what was Kansas City, did they have Munis? They did. Okay.
I have a question.
I don't have any, I don't have any further questions.
I do. I have a question.
Sorry, ahead.
I just want to go back to the tablets for a minute. And I know that the software is unrelated, but if requesting the tablets, I think it was like six to eight tablets for our code departments to go out and coordinate with each other. If we don't have this software, then are they even able to use the tablets in the same function? Because we were considering looking at the tablets with ease and communication with each department. And so if we don't have this software, the tablets and the packs, I guess the internet packs that go with the tablets is a mute point. Or do we have to have, we have to have both?
April, I think those tablets were for public works. Am I correct, Amanda? I don't think it was for HCDD.
That's, that's correct. It was, it's a work order system. It's a different module. They're called modules or software packages. There are several underneath this, but the work orders would be for the field operations team who goes deployed and for us to submit work orders to them at the complete job. Traffic lights out, potholes being repaired, limbs down, et cetera. They would be working off of those tablets to work on their work orders and getting updates and submitting ticket information in real time. Slightly unrelated because one's more of an inspection side of it and one is more of a maintenance side of it. So they're independent.
Okay.
And Angela, HCDD has computer access in their vehicles, so they, they'll be able to utilize this software.
They are, they are currently using the iPads in the vehicles. And I think it's important to note that after the pandemic, the shift of computers to actual having mobile devices such as laptops could help to eliminate the need for some of those, the tablets from the HCDD standpoint. There would still need to be some type of access point. But I think if they have tablets, much like I do now, that with the operating systems, that the computers would be sufficient.
What is the, what is the request? Now, what's prompted the request earlier than us finishing going through the budget process? What, I know that we had talked about it as we're looking at our line items and where our department needs and we're still having a lot of discussions about that. And then this comes to the work session. What, what is it about? About the need now versus waiting for us to go through the process of the budget?
So Angela, it's more of an accounting situation where right now, we're in the FY21 budget where we have available funds from what was allocated last year based off of some salary savings. So we have monies available. The last two years we've brought Intergov before you, it has not made it because we had higher priorities. We didn't have the funding there. So it is either using new money or found money in a sense. Either way, it's, so if you all decided not to pass it, we're not hiring anybody tomorrow. That money would in a sense be savings. And then we would say, hey, can we have this next year? So it's more of an accounting situation, but rather than using new money or picking Intergov over a different priority if you had a set budget for this upcoming year.
I have one, one last question. I'm not sure if I asked the question before. In the financial health, were these use of unused funds reflected in Keith's thing that we saw the first day of the budget?
So I'm gonna try to answer that. In Keith's presentation with that, any of the use of additional funds were things that were not already allocated from the total budget. Since those three positions, because it's internal money that was found, it doesn't impact that. Any of the new things would have been things above and beyond. So it would have been budget amendments or additional authorization to use new money. So this was already, this would have been included in that as, as already existing. Keith didn't, when he presented stuff, he wasn't like, oh, well, we have salary savings from these vacancies and these vacancies. So there, and most of his budget presentation wasn't actually on current FY21. It was previous year, so. There's a lot. I don't want to go into how much detail with, I mean, I can go into as much details as you all, but I don't want it to get stuck in the weeds.
That's okay. Jack, I have one other question. Would would a user such as, who's on the call now, Lynn Bratton, who wants to pay her, hi Lynn, who wants to pay her landlord license fees? Can she pay that through her account on that system? Or does she still have to come in with a check?
That's much like the permitting request. We would be looking to set up that availability for renewals and online submissions for new and renewal registrations.
So she would ultimately be able to pay for it to do that?
Yes, and that would be something through the system that we would be able to develop, yes.
Okay.
With the approval.
Also have the ability for people to pay their property taxes online? Just, just a question.
That's a different mechanism that we are standing up currently through Munis, or payments, payments.
Okay, I think, let's, let's, I'll poll the council now to see if we have the desire to move it forward. Mr. Boda?
I support moving it forward.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
I do too.
Ms. Blake?
Agree. Move it forward.
This is Gregory.
Move it forward.
Okay. We have the votes to move it forward. Ms. Nichols, if you could put that on the agenda, I would appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for their participation. We have one more item on the agenda that's been added, and that's the presentation relative to the zoo budget. And Mr. Kitchrow is gonna handle that for us.
Mr. President, I think there was one other item before that.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I do, I made a note and I put it in the wrong side. We do have one more. This is to amend the chapter 15.26 of the rental of residential premises in Salisbury City Code by adding section 15.26045 Fair Housing. Ms. Glams or Mr. Kitchrow, who's gonna handle that?
Mr. President, I have with me Johanna Cooper, who has been, you've met her before and did the initial presentation. She's been interning in our office this entire year. And she has put the finishing touches on this and will lead us in the discussion moving forward.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Johanna.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to be here. So before you was an ordinance that would require all landlords and property managers in the city to essentially disclose all of their practices related to fees, especially, and background checks, especially for criminal history. So this would require on all promotional materials, including websites and flyers and in in applications, things like that, to state the period of time that criminal histories are gonna be looked back upon and described fees and then any other kind of information related to those practices. As you all know, we've determined that the housing barriers are really complex issue, issue. But we're hoping to move forward with this and reduce at least one of those barriers by allowing participants to know upfront when they apply what kind of background checks they'll be subject to. So we look forward to any questions and any feedback.
Mr. President, I'll just add, thank you, Johanna, that we did meet with SapoA at the end of March and had a really good initial conversation on this topic. And, you know, there are many more conversations that need to have to continue to tackle these issues. But there was consensus in the room of everybody that was there, that this is a fair requirement to be putting on the landlord businesses in Salisbury. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that because that was the ask to, you know, make sure we chatted with them and start having conversations more regularly.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda?
Um, I've looked through it. I think this is, you know, I think anytime you do a credit check or, you know, whether somebody's buying a cell phone or renting a house, that, you know, that information That, you know, that information of what's being looked at should be provided to the individual upfront. We do it when we hire people at Walmart. Because sometimes it does require that and you have to go through and explain it to them what's. What's, what's going on and when they get it, because sometimes it sends it to them that. They have to fill something out and that you have to make sure. Make sure you fill it out truthfully too. So there, there's a, there, there's a part to it where if they don't provide the right information or admit something. You know, they, they won't get approved. So that that's something that I think that they should have as a, as a practice anyway.
You're for moving it forward? Yes, okay. Ms. Jackson?
I agree and we can move it forward.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I, I had a question. Um. How many people were in that SapoA meeting or how many, I guess, SapoA members were in that meeting and was it just one meeting you had with them or was it multiple?
We've just had one meeting on this topic to date. We are going to get back together to continue the conversation on next steps. But there were probably a total of fifteen or so folks in the room. The president of SapoA was there. So I imagine he also shared the conversation with others after the fact. I didn't hear any. Other feedback after. And I invited folks to make sure they shared it if they had issues or concerns.
Angela, you for moving it forward?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
I think this is great and it adds a lot of much needed transparency to this. So yeah, moving forward.
All right. Mrs. Nichols, we have the votes to move it forward for the next. Meeting. And if you would do that, I'd appreciate it. And like I said, now, now I have the, the time to talk about the zoo budget. So Mr. Kitchrow.
I have a question that before you move on, Jack, can I interject something? Just, just for clarity, because we've been voting on the issues to move something forward, but we haven't heard your vote. I know we have enough votes to move it forward, but we have to put our vote on record. Are you declining to vote or?
No, it doesn't. The vote here is just to make sure we have a majority. I vote move it forward.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kitchrow?
Yes, so. This document right here in front of you all is what I think will be the easiest way to help explain. The proposal. So if you look currently. I'm sorry, my fault. So if you look at where it says currently. This is how the cities operates from a budgetary standpoint. We have kind of two buckets. We have the city of Salisbury. With what most people think is like the, the day to day zoo operations, animal care, the actual facility, most of the staff. And then where the zoo commission comes in, they look at more the programming and events. So historically. When the zoo started off, we didn't have an education department. We didn't have a bistro. We had animals and caretakers. So as that has grown, the zoo commission took it upon itself to help create additional activities. For youth and families to enjoy the zoo, whether it's education and summer camps. Or, you know, something like getting ice cream from the concession stand to events like. Zubulation, things like that. They've helped create and foster these activities. This is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, of business that the zoo commission has, has been responsible for historically. What we are proposing, but, but right now, the way the zoo commissions, that all operates through an independent accounting system through. The zoo commission, their own bank account, not the city of Salisbury bank account. All of the staff are paid through the city and then the zoo commission reimburses. The city for all of those staffing costs, all of these full time educators. And part time people who work in the gift shop. Or work in the concession stand or greeters. Then there's other mechanisms that the zoo commission currently has to, to collect revenue to offset. Some of those expenditures, specifically education grants. They receive education grants to help pay for the full time salaries. Of some of our positions and one of them is a big MSD grant. There's also a couple endowment grants where we collect revenue to also help subsidize. Some of those operations and programming. Through several conversations with the zoo commission and Jack was part of that in, in our zoo staff. We felt it appropriate to shift the way in which we budget. And to bring basically all operations at the zoo in-house through the city finance department. So if you look at the proposed, everything in red is what would be shifting over to the responsibility of the city. So all of the staff would continually be paid for us, but we wouldn't receive a contribution from. A direct contribution line for line for those expenditures from the zoo commission. But we would also collect all of the revenues, the net revenues associated with all of the programs and events. All of the gate revenue would actually come to the city rather to the zoo commission. And then all of the net revenue and proceeds from the concessions and the gift shop sales would come to the city. So instead of going there. And then being written a check back to us, it all comes to us. But the zoo commission would still serve a vital role as the, as a nonprofit, they would continue to be. Our philanthropic arm, one of our philanthropic arms to collect private donations to manage some of our endowments. That are over at the community foundation, also manage some of our grants that we're receiving that need to go through a 501(c)(3). But with this shift, the most important thing is to note is. Is how it's still going to be a break even. Our programs and our events will continue to be a break even venture. So no additional. A requirement from the city to subsidize these programs. So. Once we do all of our revenue and all of our expenditures for the year. Whatever that net remaining balance is, the zoo commission will subsidize that with the monies that they collect through private donations. Or the funding that they have in their endowments and then the grant. So they will still make a contribution. Back to the city to, to bring that balance up to even. So from a council standpoint, you won't really see a difference. There is no additional line item. There will be some additional funding increases, but it'll be a wash. There won't be an additional. Budgetary impact. It will go more, more of a, of a use as Keith would say. We think it's appropriate to move in this direction to keep the money here. And I, I think it's a good direction for us to go and it helps us have better control over the accounting of our programs. And President Heath, I'll turn, I, I know you said on the zoo commission, you're more than welcome to add the additional comments this time.
Yes. I, I'd just like to let everybody know that the, it was unanimous with the zoo commission to make these changes. It's a lot cleaner and it also protects the. Protects the zoo commission in terms of the funding that they can collect through grants as a 501(c)(3). So everybody's in agreement. It doesn't change the budget whatsoever. It just moves it. And the, the funding from the zoo commission, the donations will be transferred as they, as they have been in the past. But actually, when the mayor and I first started talking about this before he left. He, he kept saying, and it's true, it's the Salisbury Zoo. And we need to make sure that it's there. And that's why we began the discussions and the current chairman worked with Andy. And Jim.
James Mayberry.
Mayberry. James Mary Mayberry worked with Andy and worked and worked out the. The alignment that you just saw. So I'll open up now to any questions, Mr. Boda?
I mean, this just seems like it's streamlining it to make the process a lot, a lot simpler and. And, and like you said, you know, more accountability on, on, on the monies received on a daily basis, whether. Whether it's stuff at the gift shop or the donations or the mission donations. So I think this is a good thing and. Let the zoo commission focus on what they do best and not have to worry about this, the, these menial daily tasks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, I feel it's a great thing. I have no questions. Um, we can move it forward.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions. You go ahead. Move it forward.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions. Moving forward.
Thank you. I agree. Okay. At this time, just so. We don't have to keep everybody holding on for the special meeting. I'll entertain the. Comments from the administration, closing comments from the administration first. Ms. Glans?
Um, I, I was not prepared to make those, Andy. I'll let you.
Okay. Andy?
I don't have many additional comments. I know we always emphasize the importance through this pandemic to get vaccinated and continue to, to move forward in that capacity. Those who are following social media, you know that Mayor, Major Mayor Day is back in town. So in the next couple of weeks, you may, you may be seeing him late May. So you see that familiar face pop on here. Don't be surprised.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Yeah, it was a beautiful weekend and on Delmarva. I was up in Rock Hall on Saturday. Good times up there. Had a municipal election up there. There was a guy riding around in his lawnmower with his campaign sign on the back. So Jack, that's an idea for you next time. Make sure it's a zero turn lawnmower. Now just, everybody get vaccinated. You know, I, I got the Pfizer shot, had no issues. You know, maybe stay away from the Moderna, the Pfizer one seems to be the good one. So anyway, I'll have a good week.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Jack and Mayor and possibly Ron Strickler. I have not forgotten that I would like to speak to you all. Um, possibly next week in reference to some housing conditions in my district. Um, I will contact you all to let you know, you know, when it's available for me or available for even for you all. But we, we need to have this conversation. We need, really need to have this conversation. Um, because I'm at Witten Way and I've had many of my constituents call me with concerns. Um, so we will get to that. I'm also in YouTube as well, Julia. Um. As Mayor said, please, if you haven't gotten your vaccine yet it. And be mindful to social distance and wear your mask and sanitize. And that's all I have to say for the evening. Everybody have a blessed evening.
Thank you, April. Angela?
Just my big thing, of course, if you're healthy enough, donate blood. I know as, as of last week, our region is really in a critical spot for blood donations. And our supply is, is really not even there. So please, if you're healthy enough, donate blood.
Again, Mrs. Gregory?
Um, just want to say I'm thankful for the rain that just rolled through here. My allergies are feeling much better already. But yeah, just go get vaccinated. We're doing great. We have some of the best vaccination numbers in the state, but we can be doing better. So, so please go get your vaccination.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I'd like to reinforce what Angela said about the blood. We are in a crisis. And it's going to take a lot of blood to get us out of that. So please, if you're able to, please donate. And relative to the pollen, I went to the Mission BBQ ribbon cutting today and when I came home, I looked like the Grinch. I was covered in green. So everybody have a good weekend, but before I do that, a good week. But before I do that, is, are there any questions from the audience? Please identify yourself and we'll give you a few minutes to make your comments.
Jack, I want to say one thing.
Yeah.
It's Angela, Councilwoman Angela Blake's birthday today. She's twenty five, you all.
Yes, happy birthday.
Twenty five and holding, right?
Yes.
I've been, I'm holding that for a long time.
Okay, we have, Colin's got his hand raised. Colin?
Hi, everybody. I, I have been talking to Julia, so she's aware of my comments, but I just wanted to go on record. You know, this fair housing, we're, we're supportive, but I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about the language that's in the. The current draft of all promotional materials. We're supportive of the website and of course, applications. And maybe prominent in the office, but when you, when you have words like promotional materials, it means. Advertising, it means billboards, it means radio, it means TV. And I want to make sure that whatever's in, in writing as an ordinance doesn't mean that. Everything that they print or produce has to have a disclosure statement. About, and then of course, a sort of a sample of what, what that disclosure statement would read. So I, I, I'd like to narrow it down to if, if, if they mean website, if it means. Application, great, fine, absolutely supportive, but, but promotional material needs to be a little bit more defined.
Kitchrow, any, any comments about that?
And Julia has responded to that and I think.
But Jack, that, that wasn't the goal of, of the legislation. It slipped past me. So I've already asked, I've already made the changes and emailed them to Ashley to review and. Sent them to Kim. So the goal is just to have it on. Applications, website, in the office. I, it is unreal. It's not fair and realistic to expect someone to put all of that on. You know, any, any type of promotional material, I don't think. So that'll be what, what you'll see next, next time.
Great, thank you. Problem solved, Colin.
If everything was that easy, it'd be great.
I, I agree with you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will adjourn the work session and we will now call the meeting, the special meeting of May third, twenty twenty one to order. I'll need a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
April had it first.
Oh.
I'll give it to April first and give it to Mayor as the second. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of adopting a legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, five for the first reading.
A move. Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Sullivan? Good afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ordinance number two, six, six, five, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY twenty twenty one general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's building account. For HVAC repairs. Whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has experienced a failure of the HVAC condensing unit and internal coil. Whereas the failure has resulted in a loss of the air conditioning throughout the entire Salisbury Fire Department building. Whereas the cost to cover the necessary repairs is estimated to be thirty one thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars. Whereas the Salisbury Fire Department has determined that there are insufficient funds available in other accounts to transfer to cover the amount required to cover the cost of the afforded repair. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section one, city of Salisbury's fiscal year twenty twenty one general fund budget be and, be and is hereby amended as follow. Increase the current year surplus account. Zero, one, zero, zero, zero dash four, six, nine, eight, one, zero by thirty one thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars. Increase the Salisbury Fire Department's building account. Two, four, zero, three, five, dash, five, three, four, three, zero, one. By thirty one thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars. Be further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section two is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury. Each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all of the provisions herein. Section three is further, is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury. If any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or. Shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under Maryland or federal law. Such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause of provisions to the judge. And all the provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recital set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance. If this such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
I, I guess I'll support this. I don't want to see the chief and Jimmy sweating too much, uh, through the dog days of summer, so. We'll give it.
Uh, that's big of you. Ms. Jackson?
Move.
You're on mute, April.
I'm fine with it. I'm listening, Mere.
I know. Ms. Blake?
Obviously, yes.
This is Gregory?
Yes.
All right. I'll call the motion now. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, five is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, chief. Thank Jimmy. Uh, thank everyone who participated today. It was, uh. Pretty interesting meeting. Um, and, uh. With nothing else, everybody have a good week and, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.